Good evening, folks. This is the. Good evening, folks. This is the Planning Commission meeting for June 17th of 2021. My name is Jonathan Ingram. I'm the Chair of the Planning Commission. With us tonight, it appears that we have David Cottle, Kathy Foster, Joe Columber, Jennifer Gilbert Smith, also Planning Commission members. And of course, we have numerous people of city staff as well as expert experts on the form-based code and things. And I want to go ahead and call the meeting order at 6:31. There, I banged my little screwdriver on my desk. Does anyone wish to take action regarding the agenda?
Jonathan, can we follow up the agenda, please?
We have to go to roll call. I apologize. I'm a little out of practice, David. So let's see, roll call. I'm here, Jonathan Ingram. Is Murray Williams present? Okay, David Cottle?
Here.
Jennifer Gilbert Smith?
Here.
Joe Columber?
Here.
Kathy Foster?
Here.
Darren Groff? Okay, it appears that Murray and Darren have not been able to join us tonight. Everyone, please mute yourselves and accompany me in reciting the Pledge of Allegiance. Hopefully, we'll get back to doing this live and in person pretty soon. Please rise. Can we have a flag, please, Mr. Herrmann? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. Does any Planning Commission member wish to take action regarding the agenda? Or Ryan, do we need to talk about the agenda before we do that?
Yeah, I think we should just go ahead and talk about it now before we move too far into the events of this evening. There was a-
So, folks, we are about to depart a little bit from the agenda. Ryan will explain why.
So we were notified earlier today regarding a a mistake or a an error in the documents that were sent out to the Planning Commission and the documents that were uploaded to the city's website. Basically, what had happened is the track changes did not come forward. And so they didn't show everything that we've been working on this entire time. So we thought it would be it wouldn't be appropriate for us to, one, hold a public hearing, or, two, for the Planning Commission to take any action on something that the items weren't necessarily available or readily available to the public, too. So the Chair can decide what they want to do tonight regarding the public hearing. You can open it up, take testimony. I see we have five individuals that are that are on the line. Or you can decide as a group not to have the public hearing, and then they can just provide comment during the open public comment session. And the individuals that are on here, I assume, received notification from us and will be also provided a notice when we reschedule a public hearing, because we're going to have to have another one.
To restate, I believe Ryan said that we, the public hearing tonight, we can cancel or go ahead with, but there will be a second one to deal, at least with the form-based code. Is that correct, Ryan?
Correct.
So if any of the attendees would like to put into the chat their perspective on whether or not we should hold the public hearing tonight, if you want to give testimony tonight, that'd be great. Obviously, we are going to have to have a second public hearing, though. With while we consider that, while we get, while we gather that information from the attendees, does any Commissioner wish to take action regarding the agenda?
I move that we accept the agenda with the exclusion of the public hearing.
Say. Do I have a second?
Second.
David, would you like to discuss your motion?
Yes, I believe that we need to have the full information provided to everyone so that they could have a good give and take regarding the public hearing and provide the comments associated with what our information that we have. Since they don't have the right information, it's impossible to be able to do that.
And Joe, would you like to speak to your second?
I just affirm what David said.
Okay. So this is a little unusual, and I apologize. I have a comment from Kobe Johnson that he would like the opportunity to discuss us, talk to us about a zoning issue. Would that be okay in the public citizen comment section, Mr. Johnson? Or Ms.? Thank you. Do we have a emotions on the floor? All in favor of the motion, please indicate, please raise your hand and say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. We will not have a public hearing tonight. We will invite people to speak during the citizen comment periods before, at the beginning, and at the end of the meeting to address anything they have. And we will have a second public hearing. I believe Ryan said that has to be the 15th of July.
That's the date we're looking at at this moment, correct?
Okay. Thank you. Does any Commissioner wish to take action on the consent agenda?
Make a motion that we accept the consent agenda, including the minutes.
Is there a second?
I'll second that.
Jennifer, do you wish to speak about your motion? David, do you wish to speak about your second? Does any other Commissioner wish to talk about the motion? All in favor, please say aye with your microphones open and raise your hand.
Aye.
All opposed? The motion carries. The consent agenda and the minutes from June 3rd are approved. Now is the beginning of our first citizen comment period. The citizen comment period is to provide the opportunity for members of the audience to address the commission on items either not on the agenda or not listed as a public hearing or that were previously listed as a public hearing, which will but if you wish to speak on it tonight, we will, we will listen. The Chair will open this portion of the meeting and ask for a show of hands. Please raise your hands virtually if you wish to speak. If you're on the phone, I'm sure there's some sequence of numbers you have to indicate that you wish to be taken off mute. You will need to figure that out pretty quickly. When recognized, please approach the virtual podium, give your name and city of residence, and state the matter of your interest. If your interest is an agenda item, we may suggest that you hold your comments until that time. Comments are directed at the Planning Commission only, not at the, not at other members of the audience or the city staff or at witnesses. Comments are not intended for conversation or debate. Citizen comments will be limited to four minutes for citizen comments and four minutes for any unfinished business. If you require more than this, you can reach out to Ryan. And he will place your item on an upcoming agenda. If you anticipate your comments taking longer than this allotted time, you can again let Ryan know and he will again place you on the next agenda. With that being said, the floor of citizen comments is now open. Ryan, who is our first speaker?
Looks like we have Kobe Johnson. Let me promote you to be able to talk. Go ahead and unmute, unmute yourself, Kobe.
Hi, folks. Can you hear me okay?
Yes.
You hear me? You hear me? Okay. Hey, thanks very much. I appreciate this opportunity very much. My name is Dr. Kobe Johnson. I'm a veterinarian and I live in Ollala, which is outside of Tacoma. And I'm part of a small group that would like to open a veterinary clinic in the Fred Meyer Shopping Center in Covington. We took a, there's a space there that we've got a lease on hold because in the process of applying for tenant improvements, we found out that in this particular area of zoning area, veterinary clinics are not allowed. And I know that there are animal hospitals kind of in the surrounding area. But we are addressing in writing our concerns to Mr. Herriman. That'll be coming in a letter form. But wanted to just take the opportunity to say, I believe by virtue of either the public here there's something, there's a possibility that the zoning may change and allow for other businesses, including veterinary clinics, to be in this part of the, that part of the zoning area. And I'd really like to bring veterinary medicine to that, to that area.
Anything else, Dr. Jonathan?
Just that there's kind of a big shortage of veterinary services and a lot of folks with pets are having a real hard time getting their services done. So I think it's a good opportunity to open up and allow veterinary clinics to to come into that area. And that's, that's really it. We will address it with a letter to help along. And I don't know the process. I just knew that this was going to happen tonight, and I wanted to express our interest in veterinary services.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Do we have anyone else lined up to speak, Ryan?
Um, no, no one has their hand raised. If you want to speak, now is the time to raise your hand to speak.
I do see it looks like one hand is still up.
Kobe, go ahead and lower your hand.
Folks, this is, this isn't comment period. There is another one later, but if you're to speak now, you can raise your hand and we will, and get your comments in. Seeing no additional hands raised, I'm going to close this citizen comment period. There is another opportunity later this evening. If you've missed the first one, have some more time later. The citizen comment period is now closed. We go on to the agenda. We are not having a public hearing, but I believe Ryan would like to discuss some of these documents still. Is that correct, Ryan?
Uh, yes, Mr. Chairman, members of Planning Commission, Ryan Herriman, Planning Manager, City of Covington. It's my pleasure to introduce the individuals we have here this evening. We have Bob Begford from Makers. We have Scott Bonjukian from Makers, and we have Lisa Greeter from Burke Consulting. They are going to provide you with a presentation and or answer some of your questions as they relate to the form-based code. Note that we sent out a link to you earlier today via email with the corrected version in the track changes. So you will see that again in your next council packet when we have the public hearing. But at this time, I'd like to turn it over to Bob and let Bob have the floor.
One moment, please. Please note that Commissioner Murray Williams has joined us. Welcome, Murray.
Okay, thank you, Ryan. So, so it is, so we are moving forward with the presentation, it looks like, to give you the quick overview. Okay. Okay, let me, well, good evening, first of all, planning commissioners. And I sincerely apologize on the on the PDF, on the document, as what Ryan had mentioned. In a rush to get it out in the packet, I was, I was trying to hide the comments in the column and didn't catch the the setup with the track changes. In fact, we didn't catch it until a couple hours ago that Scott was looking at the late comment that came in and realized that 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 those didn't show up on there. So sincerely apologize for that. And so, but would like to give you a, an overview. So let me try and share my screen and we'll give you the slideshow, quick overview. So make sure I got this correct here. Okay, then get to the slideshow. Bear with me. It looks good now, or, or did I switch it?
Oh, it looks like you need to switch back.
Oh, I need to switch back. Okay. Okay, there we go. It's probably because I got on a different screen. Okay, so Scott and I are gonna switch off with this. And this is similar to the presentation. Actually, what we did is we went back to the presentation we gave in February. I know that we were here, well, staff gave you the presentation in March, and then we went through articles four, five, and six in April. But just a bit of the overview here is is the city's looking at changes to the regulations for the, that control the design and uses of downtown, including the buildings, the streets, and public spaces. And logic, this is going to be a form-based code which will effectively implement the community's vision, respond to changes in the local and regional economy, and try to be a catalyst for high-quality construction here in downtown Covington. As you know, the city's leveraged a grant received by the State Department of Commerce on this. And a couple bullets on the why are we doing this? Since 2010, there's been some concern over the quality of development, which is really picking up, as you've seen around. And the growth has been higher than really than expected here. So it's a good time to be doing this. And with significant utility improvements and upgrades, it also makes it a great time. And and I already mentioned about making a jibe with the local real estate market and just evolving construction practices as these things change. So another part of this is really trying to make the code easier to use, because a part of the challenge with the existing code is, is that there's a lot of vagueness to certain provisions. And there's so much opportunity to depart and deviate from the code that it really waters things down. So we're trying to create really a better mix of predictability and flexibility. So the outcome of the project is a new hybrid form-based code that supports downtown's vision. And the other part, Lisa Greeter is here from Burke. At the end of the, once I go through the code material to provide an overview of the infill exemption, which exempts certain types of development downtown from environmental review as allowed by state law. And also, she's going to present as a slide or two on the multifamily tax exemption provisions. So a bit about the schedule, we started in spring of last year. COVID obviously delayed us a little bit. We would be originally planned wrapping this up probably five or six months prior to what we are doing now. But we held our big virtual open house in September, which I'll talk about in a minute. Here we are today, the public hearing, and we've put in our other dates here. So July 15th, the second, well, in this case, the first public hearing. And then aiming for August 10th at City Council. And also, we'll be looking at getting the final EIS out between those two dates. So at the beginning of the project, we had, I believe, 18 stakeholder interviews with, in fact, with some of you and other community members and Mayor and I think some other council members that were really useful at kind of getting us started, looking at the vision, how things have changed. And, and look some of the issues with code. Lisa also documented some of the project scoping and pre-scoping. There were just three comments that came in on that. And then I'm in, at that September workshop, we had 63. We had very good participation, particularly for a virtual event. Really exceeded all our expectations. And with that, we had a survey. There's a little screenshot to the right. We have 12 concept, code concept, survey questions, which are really useful at helping us move forward with some of the concepts. In fact, one of the concepts we did not move forward with because we had lukewarm responses to one of the ideas. This was also available online. We only got nine responses on that, but that's still helpful. And then we had Lisa led a March draft supplemental EIS community meeting, which we had 12 participants at. And then, of course, we had our three meetings with you between February and April. And I believe we've received three written comments at various times. So not really that much. Including the one today, I believe, from the gentleman, I think from the gentleman who spoke, could be wrong. The other thing I should mention is the Department of Commerce sent us several-page letter a couple weeks ago. Well, it was about a month ago. And it expressed support for many of the provisions that we're doing. It had a couple of suggestions, comments that I documented here. They did have some concern about the removal of affordable housing floor area ratio bonus, which we'll talk about. And we had reasons for, for taking out because a lot of the, a lot of, pretty much most of the development that's occurred already in town center already is affordable. And there's a desire to kind of mix it up and have a diversity of, of housing and to tend to increase that capacity and get a greater quantity of housing. They had comments on the street and block frontage standards. Some talked a little bit about on-street parking and a lot of other miscellaneous comments. And these were great. We made some changes, mostly minor, in response to those. And in the city sent a response to comments. In fact, those may have been in your pocket. So I'll get to go over the code updates and try to stay at a higher level with these. And I did want to sort of summarize what are the top five things that we're doing with this code via the features of the approach. The first one, again, is trying to make it easier to use and more predictable. The second one is, is trying to really strengthen the design standards and prioritize the most important elements. And we'll, again, we're going to give you an overview of that. And also focusing the town center development at the former elementary school site. There's been a number of town center, public-private partnership type of developments that have happened since the last printing effort that provide a lot of good learning things that we can learn from and, and make, make ours better as a result of it. And we've integrated that into the form-based code. Another thing is providing a clear frame, framework for redevelopment, for the form of redevelopment, if and when it happens. Kind of recognizing that, you know, Covington is a suburb. People are still going to need to drive. So, but we envision more of a kind of a slow transition. But trying to make, make it become more pedestrian-oriented while also accommodating the vehicle, being an important part of recognizing that, that, those issues. And retaining some of the current regulatory approaches where appropriate. And Scott's going to take over here for a bit.
Okay, thanks, Bob.
Yeah, tell me you're going to forward the slide.
Uh, so this is a list of just kind of the most notable minor changes that have occurred since the first was presented in the spring to the commission. I'll just put on the list really quickly. Apparently, in the town center zone, there's a limitation for religious facilities. On, they have to be on sites less than one acre. And the First Amendment and Department of Justice guidance recommends that other types of gathering spaces that are nonreligious have a similar limit. So we put that in place. Because those types of uses can be pretty flexibly configured, and you might even be able to integrate those into mixed-use development. Okay, clarifications for how setbacks are measured and applied within the MHO zone and adjacent to it to help make a transition from higher intensity development to the existing single-family areas in the MHO zone. Working with staff, we made some careful adjustments to new standards for self-service storage facilities regarding location by zone, size of facilities, and architectural design standards. And the purpose of that is to help preserve prime downtown land for productive uses. Uh, work with staff, we've also implemented some new standards for electric vehicle parking spaces. There's a lot of movement in the auto market right now towards electric vehicles. So we want to help the city prepare for that. We've integrated some flexible standards there to help prepare new development to accommodate those. A really small thing, we've added a standard for larger sites, like, like big shopping centers or larger multifamily developments to have raised crosswalks at key locations. That's the purpose of that is to increase the visibility of pedestrians and provide some traffic calming for drivers. Lastly, we've added some clarifications for how landscaping and lighting standards are applied. The clarification just kind of helped provide a little bit of more certainty about how things are applied and calculated there to help just help code users get through those standards. Next. Thanks, Bob. So again, the code organization, you've seen this before. No changes here. We're in chapter 1831. Basically, a wholesale replacement of it. And it's broken up into six articles for the purpose of navigation and grouping together similar topics. Next. I want to note, you know, we've pulled a lot of existing regulations and design guidelines into this. And we just noted here that basically things are a combination of new and old. So we've definitely, we've got things that are working well, and some things are completely new, such as the block running standards. We'll jump into zoning. Uh, so as you all know, the downtown area is regulated by four zones. We are not proposing any map changes to these zones through this project. On the, within the zones, though, we've made a few adjustments. First, we've clearly defined every land use that's listed in the table here, just to help staff and applicants have a little bit more certainty about what's allowed and what's not allowed. And we've also added that column to the right side of the table called additional provisions. And that replaces the footnote system. That's a little bit tricky than so we've added, if there's a condition or reference to another code section that's important to know about, we put it in this column, just to make things a little bit easier.
Actually, Scott, while, while we got this slide here, I thought I would mention, too, that that we both looked at the veterinarian in the, well, both in the town center and general commercial is actually an allowed use. So at the Fred Meyer Center, at least it's proposed to be allowed. So I thought I'd mention that.
Yes, that's, that's, it's not currently allowed, and it is proposed to be allowed in the mixed commercials. Uh, we adjusted building height changes. A lot of thought went into this. And we'll focus on the town center on this slide. Again, the, the current code allows up to 75 feet or equivalent to about seven stories in the town center zone. But looking at all of the recent development from the past three, four, or five years, buildings are only going up to 55 story, or excuse me, 55 feet or five stories. And looking at the bonus system, we thought we can make that a little bit more robust. What we did was lower the maximum heights by right the five stories, but allow you to go up to eight stories using various bonus systems. We also changed the bonus system from lower area ratio based to building height based. And the reason for that is building height is just a lot more easier to understand for applicants and staff. And it's just a little bit easier to calculate and work with. And we made these kind of adjustments throughout all four zones downtown. As far as the specific bonus changes, the only difference here, since earlier this spring, is we removed the significant water feature as an option. And our rationale there is that a water feature on its own is not really a public amenity that's gonna that really relates to the building size or its impacts, and it doesn't really merit its own bonus. But we require, if you do a significant public plaza, we integrated that water feature requirement into that type of public amenity. On these other things like underground parking, structured parking, as land values increase and more density is envisioned, structured parking is going to be kind of market-driven anyway. So we don't see a need to grant a bonus for that. And through block connections and multimodal pathways, those are actually going to be required of development now through the the block drainage maps and the street type standards. So those type of connections will be made. Other dimensional standards, we looked at, again, I mentioned, we removed the Florida ratio standards to replace that with a hyper bonus. We've added some more flexibility for setback standards, depending on the context and the location, the, the distance between the building with a minimum landscape area. And I'll get into that on another slide. The slider back gets into why we removed the maximum density standards. We introduced landscape area- Uh, we introduced landscape area standards to replace impervious surface because it achieves the same goals, but it's a little bit more flexible. By allowing a variety of different types of landscaping to apply, such as you could do rain gardens. Small parks or other other features that help soften the appearance of parking lots and buildings. And again, we added some clarification for how this ratio system works in the code. There. And, um, as we mentioned previously, uh, we've also recommended removing the maximum residential density. Mostly because it's an extra layer regulation that's. Is not strictly necessary. Covington has a lot of other standards already in place that manage the size of buildings and the practical amount of units are going to be built such as. Parking standards, minimum open space setbacks, those types of things are already going to limit the amount of residential units that you can practically build on a site. So we recommend just streamline things and removing that. Uh, three types. Article three. We built on the framework of the old map, uh, but after interested in having a little bit more. Predictability and certainty about a street standard for other streets downtown, so we expanded what's uh, streets are mapped and give it different types across town. And the next slide. So we've kept the same types, it's types one, two, three, and four, uh, which have different standards for number of lanes, uh, parking lanes, landscape standards, things like that. We've made the map a little bit easier to understand by. Differentiating between existing treats in a solid line and a dashed line means a planned or conceptual street. The orange lines indicate through block connection standards, which are intended to help. Decrease the distance that a pedestrian has to walk and help make for some more. Interesting and varied developments. And also we've integrated onto the map where regional trails are planned from the comprehensive plan, uh, park standards and other documents.
And I'll I'll talk to this side, Scott, uh, which we just added. We talked with, we talked with Ryan today, uh, he received a. Updated site plan from the development here at the. Uh, on the former school site. Just south of the medical facility on two seventy-six. And they've been, they've had a number of different designs going back to last year and. At issue in this case is we show two seventy-seven. Uh, continuing from the backside of the subdivision there. Towards the the core of the town center. And that would be classified as a type-two commercial street. So one of the issues is here is is. Is the development, at least in their plans, even in their earlier plans. Did not show a through road there and part of it is unique coming kind of from the single family area, but that's zoned as part of the town center. But obviously won't change for a while. So they would like to not include a road. But with the discussion with the plans here, we we did get them to include a nice. Looking pedestrian pathway and connection that sort of functions as a through block connection. So, um, we talked about this and and. One consideration that 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 we might think about is whether or not to keep this street. Connection requirement, you know, saying telling Ryan here that. It, you know, it'd kind of be nice to have a street connection, but it's probably not absolutely critical that it be vehicular and be a street. But all of you may have may have different opinions on this and connectivity. But in any case, one clear option would be. If you thought it weren't this site warranted some flexibility. To not require a street, but allow for that option for just a. A through block pedestrian connection. Then you would change this line here to simply be one of those dashed orange orange lines which runs. Kind of north-south there, P O L to a hundred and seventy-first and notice that this. Would connect up towards Polaris. Between the two blue lines there. So that's a consideration and we've got a couple more of these coming up, so I'll have. I'll have Scott continue here on the next slide.
Um, thanks Bob, so more generally on the street standards, the the whole design guidelines. The line between regulating the right-of-way and regulating the building frontages in the street standard, so. Uh, we've separated those more cleanly, I'll get into block credit standards in article four. But basically, as far as the standards themselves and lane whiffs and landscape sidewalks, uh, most of the adjustments have been relatively minor. We've added some flexibility in the standards for to allow. Develop if a developer is required to build a street, um, they have a little bit of leeway here and there depending on the the context. Um, and then have a building or building to design the street a little differently. Um, we've also cleaned up and refined the cross-section drawings here. Um, and this is just an example of two seventy-second street. Uh, Bob was talking about the through block connection standards, uh, those are intended to be again, uh, mid-block pedestrian passageways. There are three types that a developer or an applicant can choose to build if one of these orange lines runs through their site or adjacent to their site. They can either build a woo nerve, which is kind of a shared pedestrian auto street intended for cars to move slow, you might have some outdoor dining and. The street may be closed occasionally. Um, or you can do a landscape passageway or downtown passageway and the the difference between those is that a downtown passageway is intended to. Potentially have some and commercial activity along it. While a landscape passageway is more of just a pleasant place to walk and might have residential units on the ground floor next to it.
Thanks Scott, yeah, these are, these are really good and important tool for the future town center. If and when redevelopment occurs, not only to get these connections, but. As part of the block fronted standards, which I'll get into in a minute. Also addresses how the development relates to these, so these are positive features that the developments are, you know, kind of orient around. And make turn into a positive thing, not just something you turn your back on. And you put with the service and trash containers next to. So, uh, I'll get into articles four, five, and six, which form the design standards and. The the key thing I had mentioned earlier about seeking a balance between predictability and flexibility, the key here is just really. So staff, public officials, community members. And applicants know clearly what the minimum is that you have to do to meet the standards. So that everybody understands that. Uh, but also it integrates strategic flexibility because that's needed from time to time, but really. How we do that is is have clear numerical standards. That are black and white as much as we can. Uh, and occasionally provide this toolbox approach where there's. You know, you choose from a number of features to meet the standard and the designer applicant gets to choose. Uh, which helps control cost and creativity of the design. And then integrating strategic departure opportunities, you know, right now you could depart from almost anything in your current code, so much so that creates a lot of instability. But in this case, we're only allowing for strategic departures for certain things. And in many cases have criteria for how far you can go in the departures. So it's a very important difference between what you have now and what is proposed here. And we've just found it to be a really good tool for staff to to that promotes some negotiation. And the ability to say no when the design does not meet the intent. So, uh, block frontage standards, this is a little bit different from the current approach. I've mentioned really some of the problems here, a big one is that. In the town center zone requires ground floor commercial frontages. Along all streets, which as we know is probably not. The most reasonable thing, you know, and maybe it wasn't ten years ago and it's certainly more challenging now. You know, if you've looked at the Polaris site back there is kind of the. The prime case of how challenging this is. The other thing is the the current standards don't quite adequately address all of the design issues. And and particularly with some of the development trends. And 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 things have evolved, so it's a chance for us to kind of pick stock and figure out where to go, so. The block frontage concept, we designate building setbacks and orientation on a block-by-block basis. With one of these five types ranging from storefronts, which are obvious to. Landscaped where you require the landscape setback to mixed, which is a choice between them. And then there's this gateway designation, uh, for two seventy-second, which I'll explain in a minute. And basic is is a flexibility where you got the most flexibility. Storefronts are naturally storefronts that look like this, a lot of transparency. Weather protection, entry face the street and ground floor commercial uses. Inside those spaces. Some examples, there's only a few strategic areas where we're showing these and that includes the. Former school site, which is probably our best opportunity to sort of create a main street. But also, uh, taking the area around the roundabout at two seventieth. And one seventy-second, if and when redevelopment occurs. The the coal site might be an example that could happen at some point. Uh, that those would have to sort of reposition and be storefronts, fronting on the red portions of those that. That cross section there. And then also, uh, if Safeway site redevelops, that can connect. In there, how one seventieth that that is continued from where Polaris is. That that would need to be storefront off of two seventy-second, uh, again, if and when that site redevelops. So we thought we were very strategic on where these happen and then all those areas in the purple are more. Um, it's property owner choice, uh, you know, they could go storefronts or they could go. Landscape setback or but the idea is that those would become more pedestrian friendly and it's not. You know, not just put a parking lot in front of all of those. Uh, here's the landscaping setback concept, it could either mean stoops. Uh, or it could be the commercial buildings with a setback like in the bottom right there. And then again, mixed i- is a choice between those. The other point here about that development that I mentioned at the. At two seventy-second at the the former school site at the western edge there. Is the block frontage, so we had initially thought with this approach that. You see where it changes. I think you could probably see my cursor here, where it changes from purple to the green. Cause our thought there is with the medical office building. And sort of the subdivision over here that it would. A transition to more of a landscape setback might work and that's why we did that. But it turns out the developer there would like to actually do a storefront design. With commercial on the ground floor and residential above. So under this block frontage designation, they couldn't do that. So one thing that that, uh, based on that plan that we might consider is changing that maybe all the way to one sixty-eighth. To the purple mixed designation and that would allow the that would allow the choice. Of a storefront there. The other part of their concept. Uh, that I'll bring up too is the retail space depth. So, uh, where you have, where you either are required to do storefront. Or where you choose to do storefront on a mixed street. We've got a minimum space depth for that retail space thirty feet. And it has that little, um, departure symbol there. That essentially says there's some flexibility to that. And so we have to scroll down, I've cop screenshot it here. And so there's some departure criteria and we say that. Reduced depths on up to one quarter, twenty-five percent. Of applicable Brock block frontages will be considered where the applicant. Can successfully demonstrate with proposed alternative design and configuration of the space. Is viable for a variety of permitted retail uses. Scott would only, um, i- i- in this case, the development, they want. A longer stretch and they would essentially need to. Go way more than twenty-five percent, almost the whole building would have to be twenty-five feet. So essentially it wouldn't meet it because they've got limited space. So, uh, as a result of that, I want to at least throw out. You know, that you might consider some options, one is it's to say, no, let's keep the thirty feet, we want to have viable commercial spaces and not have these unrentable space. Another option is to is if you think it ought to be more flexible, one option is decrease the. Uh, the space depth from thirty to twenty-five feet and that would allow their design. Another third option would be to. Uh, delete this reference to twenty-five percent in the departure criteria. So you could see the red highlight there. That you could say reduced depths will be considered and and essentially leave out the twenty-five percent if you think. That approach will be better to stick with the thirty-foot minimum, but still maybe allow extra flexibility. So those are some considerations. That you might think about. And I'll just keep going, I don't know if maybe at the end. There might be discussion or if you save that for the next meeting. The other. Gateway block frontage is the other frontage and that's intended largely for two seventy-second Ken Kangley. And the idea here is that you'd focus your pedestrian oriented stuff. The buildings by the intersections and allow more flexibility between the intersections, will kind of look like this image here. An image from Beaverton, Oregon that sort of does this and has the parking lots in between. Uh, and then the basic frontages would apply to kind of these other streets like one sixty-fifth. Along the power lines where you want to allow. Flexibility or probably even these cul-de-sac type streets in the subdivision. Which probably going to stay like that for a long time and you probably want to allow flexibility, at least in the near term. So those you have more flexibility as to where parking lots are located. Than the other street types. So the getting into transitioning to some other things, there's some public space standards in the current. Code and design guidelines and maybe i- if you've been to Polaris, you see that. That that there's room for improvement there, um, in the quality of the public spaces. And because they're somewhat vague. And there's there, so the provisions that we put together. Have some improvements on this and what we did is we. Show here some differences between the old new code, we've got a different quantitative amount. Uh, of requirement in this new code, we're requiring two percent of the site. But the big thing is enhancing the design standards for the space and making them very clear. Uh, and that's what this next slide gets into. To make sure that these spaces are visible, welcoming, that there's some seating and some amenities there and there's some landscaping. So a lot of work has gone into creating those design standards to make sure that the quality of those spaces are good. Uh, the other part is residential amenity space and. The again, we've got a chart here that compares the old code and new code, I won't go into the all the details, but. Rather than right now, it just says a hundred square feet per unit, what we've done is we've got. We've changed it to go from a hundred square feet for studio in one bedroom. And a hundred and fifty square feet for two bedrooms and more. And then again, a lot of work on the design of these spaces, so. A lot of. Standards there. Uh, in more detail regarding the width of the spaces. Uh, the types of improvements that go and also what faces the spaces to make sure that you don't have any blank walls, for instance, facing those spaces. Off-street parking standards. No major changes to the basic requirement, there's some adjustments here and there. And also integrated some provisions that. Developers may request parking above or below the requirements in exchange for parking study. And Scott already mentioned the electric vehicle parking standards and there's a new bike parking standards as well. And then lastly, building design, a lot more work went into here at creating that balance of. Predictability and flexibility, but in fact, the current standards purposely avoided prescriptive standards, but as a result. Created more confusion for staff on how to administer them, so. This tries to create a clear minimum bar and then allow you some choices as how to get there. And integrates the the toolboxes approach and if for really long buildings, kind of like Polaris. You have to do some bigger, uh, features to, uh. Mix up, in fact, the next slide here kind of shows an example of that. You know, rather than just have the articulation. Of the right and far-left parts of the building go all the way, you would have to do some. of the right and far left parts of the building go all the way, you would have to do something to kind of break up these longer buildings like that. Also, building details are really important and so we've got a toolbox of options for what you could do to to integrate some nice details into the building. And also there's some, there's some window standards to make sure that you don't do the version in in F where it's got neither no trim or no recess or projection, add a sense of depth and richness to the to the facade. And again, we shot it, try to show a lot of examples, good and bad, in a range of architectural styles of how to do it. And lastly, building materials, you've got special standards for concrete block, metal siding. Also EFS, which is synthetic stucco, allowing those types, but if you do them, having some standards for them. And then beyond that, wanted to give you a couple of slides update on the school site town center concept. So the in our workshop, we presented, there's a couple of ways that you could do the civic campus or town center development there, either with the kind of the commons approach or more of a an urban approach with a parking garage in the middle. But both of them would emphasize this main retail street here and essentially have the same block frontage standards. And so this was our sketchup model, kind of showing one example, how it could be implemented. Integrated some upper level setbacks on that main street above the third or and then we wanted to show the the concept of which you produced back in twenty twenty sixteen with this commons and you could still do an approach like that. You know, that that's still still an option to have a design with a big open space in the middle there. And then these are just examples of those town center types of developments that we were thinking about here, ranging from the Glen Woodville examples, Redmond and Newcastle. So with that, Lisa Greeter is here and has a couple of slides that she'll run through really quick on the CIPA infill exemption. Take it away.
One moment, please. Ryan, there's a lot of material just that presented. Do you want to have commissioners ask questions now or wait till the end of all the material?
Either way, I think it whatever benefits the commission, I think that they can ask questions now or they can wait until the end. It's really, it's really up to you commissioners, whatever you want to do.
Does any commissioner feel strongly one way or the other?
Taking notes along the way and I feel it's more effective if we go through all the presentation and ask the questions afterwards.
Okay, I'm okay with that. Does anybody disagree? All right, we'll do it that way. Thank you for your.
Thanks, Bob. And I wanted to note that we did make a presentation to the planning commission on some of these concepts in May. So this is not, this hasn't changed much since then, but I will give an overview. So one of the things that the city is doing with the downtown area is an infill exemption under the State Environmental Policy Act, that's CIPA. And it allows the city to prepare a programmatic environmental impact statement and adopt code amendments that streamline the environmental review process in light of the city having a lot of other codes in place for critical areas, transportation concurrency and the benefit of having the updated design standards with the form-based code. So it's just, it's meant to say if you're consistent with all these rules, the city doesn't need a lot more paperwork because the homework is done. So Bob, thank you. So one of the things that goes along with issuing the environmental impact statement and taking the comment is amending the city's code to address the infill exemption. So one thing to note, and this was a scoping comment early on in the EIS process from the Muckleshoot Tribe was they were concerned about development near streams and wetlands. Well, the infill exemption doesn't apply if you have lands covered by water. It's also meant to get housing and mixed use development in areas that don't really have as much as the comprehensive plan desire. So if there's a rezone proposed later, it would not meet the infill exemption. But what would be, it would apply in the four zones, general, commercial, mixed, commercial, MHO, mixed housing office and town center. And what would be exempt would be residential development that's above the flexible thresholds that the city has adopted in its code. Right now you can reduce your CIPA review if you have sixty or fewer dwelling units in three of the four zones that I referenced. So anything, it can be larger than sixty units. In other words, and it can also be in the town center zone, which which is not covered by the standard exemptions the city has. You can also exempt mixed use development and then standalone commercial development like office of sixty five thousand square feet excluding retail development. So really, again, it's meant to get mixed use. So what's on the screen here is the current CIPA exemptions, so nine or fewer single family dwellings, sixty or fewer multifamily in just those those zones, MHO, MC, GC, so it excludes the town center. And then commercial buildings up to twelve thousand square feet. And so the proposed amendments again will be adding the town center zone, any multifamily development, any mixed use development, and then commercial space sixty five thousand square feet would be allowed under the infill exemption. Other component that is proposed for adjustment is multifamily tax exemption, which is another incentive to try to get housing into centers where they're desired by a community. So a while back, the city did identify the downtown area as subject to or authorized to have multifamily tax exemption. So the city put that in place in twenty twelve. It applies right now in the town center and MHO zone. And so property owners that are proposing market rate units can get an eight-year property tax exemption. And if it's affordable, twelve-year property tax exemption. So the proposed amendments are really about the standards you'd like to see as part of a proposal in order to get the tax exemption. So for eight and twelve year proposals, so market rate or affordable, adding a requirement for green building standards. And then for twelve year affordable, adjusting the percent share of affordable. Right now you could do up to a hundred percent affordable units. And I think the city's experience over the last few years is, you know, shown a desire to have a couple of things. One is mixed income communities and also supportive services. It could be daycare, it could be job training, it could be other counseling. So that's, that's the proposal before you. And so Bob, if we want to go to the next one, I, this is what the language looks like. It's in your packet as well. So eight year would have the twelve, would have this lead silver, that's what we mean by green building. Lead silver standard. And then for the twelve year, a lot of that underlying text is requiring, is specifying the percentage of affordable units and the idea of supportive studios or supportive services rather. And then also lead silver standard. I mentioned at your study session in May that there was a law that had passed that amended some of the multifamily tax exemption standards and talking it over with Ryan, there's a number of things that you'll want to do to adjust the standards, but it's probably just needs a little bit more time for the city to consider the changes. They're good changes, but it'll just take time to bring it back before you. The changes we're proposing are sort of your local discretion standard for for affordability and design. These other provisions are going to be requirements for what somebody has to submit for the tax exemption and some other ways to get affordable ownership housing. So that'll be a separate work program. And then I want to note too that the environmental impact statement, in addition to addressing the different standards that Bob and Scott reviewed with you and these multifamily tax exemption and infill exemption, we identified a couple of areas where a map change would be appropriate in the future land use map in the comprehensive plan. One is the civic campus where it's the big green in the middle of that red dash line. Because as Bob mentioned, there's a couple of concepts for that. And the city's been considering for some time a mixed use development as well as civic uses that the map should probably show as downtown, so it would go to pink instead of public parks, recreation and schools. As a former school site, that's why it it showed up as the green. And then on the other hand, there's some pink areas on the south or east side of Wax Road that the city has purchased for this South Covington Soco Park. And so instead of pink, that could be green. So basically it would be adjusting based on the status of some public lands.
And that's our, that's our presentation. We can go back as needed for any comments or questions. So we'll be ready.
Thank you. Ryan, would you like to say anything before we open it up to the planning commissioners for questions and comments?
No, thank you to our consultants for providing the great information this evening. Thank you, planning commissioners, for your patience throughout this. We're going to get through this process just to let everybody know where we are with the the review and with the scheduled timeline. Once again, so Jen, July fifteenth, we're we're eyeing that date for a planning commission, public hearing and recommendation to city council. At the August tenth city council meeting, we have to bring this to them for their adoption, potentially that evening. The reason that is is because we have a moratorium in place on self self-storage facilities and part of the amendments to the form-based code deal specifically with self-storage facilities. And that moratorium lapses in September. And the reason for the moratorium was the form-based code and putting these regulations and requirements in place for design. So with that.
Sorry, go ahead.
With that, we'll open up for questions.
I was going to say that sounds like a pretty fixed deadline there, Ryan.
Yeah, there's, there's more to it than what I'm able to tell you over the the Zoom call here, but yeah, we have a pretty fixed deadline when it comes to grant funding as well, so.
Okay, I'm going to go one by one through the commissioners and give them an opportunity to ask questions and make comments. I'll start with Kathy Foster, please.
Kathy, you're on mute.
Okay, you had a picture labeled downtown passageway, which had, it looked like commercial on both sides, which I really liked. My comment is that when we were talking to Lake Point people and then there's an area that's kind of like a peninsula that juts out into the lake of Lake Point. I was asking if that was going to be all walking area, like you would walk, like an outdoor mall. Okay, no cars. And they said that that those areas, if you can't have cars and parking, that those areas don't rent well because retailers want to have parking in front of their store. The downtown passage that I'm looking at here kind of reminds me of up in Seattle at University Village. It's very similar to some stuff they have, which I personally enjoy parking my car and walking through stuff like that. And that is outdoor. So I don't, I don't know what the truth is. How's that? I really like it, but Lake Point said retailers don't. So that's my comment on that. The other thing I wanted to mention was there was a picture of some parking spaces, which made me think it reminded me of the parking spaces that they have at Costco because they're much wider than, I'll say Fred Meyer or Safeway. And your car has less of a tendency to get whacked in the side. So if if there was a vote on parking, though the style that they have at Costco, I believe is better than the other styles. And that was one of the pictures you had in your presentation was the parking lot Costco, so. Do you have a feeling on the downtown passageway of what retailers like or don't like?
Yeah, I can comment on that. It's, it's definitely harder. If, I mean, there's a lot of pedestrian malls and ideas that they're challenging, even in a suburban environment, streets that don't have on-street parking likewise are also harder. It doesn't say that they can't be successful, but there needs to be, there needs to be a lot of activity and accessibility for them to happen. So in this, in our approach here, we're not requiring such an approach. In fact, this downtown passageway, we have, again, there's standards for the design of the passageway itself, but the important thing are the standards for what these uses are on the sides of them facing the passageway. And we don't necessarily require retail on them. So the middle, the middle image on here, maybe if you can see my cursor, is actually residential. It's in South Lake Union and that's a it's kind of like the, you've got the common residential amenity areas facing it. So but that's an example that's sort of a passageway. These other ones are obviously in Europe on my vacations with retail, but with tons of pedestrians and heavy population around it. And they work there for various reasons that they work.
But I go to Whistler a lot and they have the same kind of thing in Whistler, but the passageway would be wider. But you know, people park their car and they walk, so.
Well, and the other thing is the pictures on the left here are the Wooner. You know, if you've been up to, if you've been to Kirkland and seen their lake street since it's been redesigned, they block that thing off, I think, every weekend. And I was in Bothell a few weeks ago and they do the same, actually, since the pandemic start, they essentially, it's blocked off permanently. So it's sort of become a street that's a full pedestrian mall because they've got lots of restaurants there. So I think a good approach, at least what I would say for Covington is kind of try this approach where you've got a main street with the capability of closing it on key times. You know, Mount Lake Terrace, we worked on their town center plan because they've got a light rail station coming. They've got a a new main street planned in their form base code. And that's kind of the approach that they're going to take is they want the cars in the street, but with the ability to block it off. You know, and maybe you could block it off as much as you want and probably your shop owners are willing to okay with on it. That'd be my, my long-winded answer.
No, that was very good. Thank you.
Thanks.
Kathy, do you have any other questions or?
Nope, that was.
Okay, I will invite Joe to speak next.
I don't know if there's a question for Ryan or who is for, I'm just curious how much of the, I guess I'm kind of ignorant about this point, how much of the new proposed downtown center is, has been purchased or bought by developer? How much of it is already, do they already have plans, somebody have plans for? I mean, I know we have that new facility going on at the corner of Covington Way and Wax Road. How much of that is already spoken for or under consideration or? How much of that is already spoken for or under consideration, or where are we at in terms of developers moving in there?
So there are quite a few properties located within the downtown town center zone specifically that have either been spoken for, or development is currently taking place, or development will take place. You have Station by Vintage, you have the Vineyard Assisted Living and Memory Care, and then this new proposal that is going to come in here soon regarding the, I believe they are referring to it as potentially Covington Commons, a mixed-use development there with quite a few residential units. But there are, there are areas within, within the town center and downtown specifically that are prime for development or redevelopment. And just because something's built there today in 2021 doesn't necessarily mean it's gonna be the same layout in 2035. So this is kind of not only looking at what we have currently, but we're looking at the future. And this is, this is a plan that, you know, is, is based on, you know, what we have going on with our, with our comprehensive plan and everything that's going on with our, our growth target. And this actually helps us achieve those line items.
Yeah, I can add that in working with a lot of the other communities in the region, you know, where things are changing and naturally the sites that are getting developed here are basically the vacant ones. But then eventually that if you've got some sites that have gone out of business and you've got a big empty box, and you've got a willing developer, you know, things are happening and, but sometimes it takes a while, you know, you might have, you know, the safeways of the world might be on a super long lease and they could, there's potential that they could be gone in five years, or they could still be there in 30 years, you don't know. So this code is trying to be opportunistic and it doesn't, you know, it puts its chips, like the town center where you have control, you know, so that's where trying to create some energy in kind of a town center movement. But if you put, if you rely too much on the redevelopment and some of these bigger boxes, you know, it just may take forever. And things will be incremental, and you might be surprised at some that get redeveloped, and then other ones just take forever. You know, even downtown Bellevue, if you look at downtown Bellevue, it looked like this 20 years ago, and gradually things have developed. There's still, there's still some of these one-story buildings, though, with, with, with retail, you know, they just slip over, they get renovated, and property's gotten so expensive there that it changes, you know. Here it's gonna be slower, but it, eventually it'll happen.
The city already, I'm assuming the city already owns the old school property, and that's, that's protected, and we're talking about that as the town center, technically the core of the town center?
The city owns half of that property. We own where the actual school was. The adjacent property is not owned, the adjacent property to the west is not owned by the city. And that's the area in question where they were talking about the, the future kind of Main Street, if you would, or the mixed-use development along that possible civic campus and all those ideas that were thrown out there.
The, the tax exemptions are mentioned for the multifamily housing, that's exemptions for the owner, is that correct?
It's property tax, yes.
Okay, thank you, that's all my questions.
Thank you, Joe. Next on my list is Jennifer, and I just picked it random, so.
Yes, if it's okay, I'd rather go last, because mainly I wanted to talk about what Bob had questions for us. I wanted to go through those, so we can cover all.
I will move on to David then, and we'll let Jennifer go last.
Sorry, took me a moment to unmute. First off, I wanted to say thank you for the updates that were made regarding electric vehicles. I thought it was lacking, and, and, and based on all of the information we have for the state requiring electric vehicles and everything, I thought that that was really a needed section improvement, and it's now included, so I want to say thank you for that. Regarding the 277th linkage there, either being a street or a through-block connection or a passageway, I'm in favor of a passageway, as Kathy was addressing. I think it's gonna be a much better perspective for the city, but I'm sure that the retailers are probably gonna want to have parking through there as well. So, you know, I know we're gonna have to find out the right answer going forward with this plan, and I think that is an area of major concern that we're gonna have to address, maybe not by the planning commission, but definitely it needs to be looked at in the I am wanting a quick question regarding this form-based code second draft that I'm looking at for June 2021. Is, is that incorporate all the information we have in the presentation of one? Number two, are we going to be anticipating additional updates to this form-based code?
Ryan, you want me to catch that?
Yeah, go ahead, Bob.
Well, first of all, I don't know, Ryan, if you were able to send them that we, again, the PDF that went in the packet, it didn't show the track changes. So I don't know if Ryan had, we passed along to Ryan the updated version, and so I don't know if you have that yet, but, you know, so this is the second full draft, and I, as far as other changes, we don't plan on making any other, at least in, before the next public hearing. But it is an opportunity to discuss those issues that came up with that, those, that site plan today on a couple of those things. But I, I don't envision making any changes to this second draft, but what you could do is in the end, make, make a recommendation with adjustments to the second draft. That's, that's kind of what I would assume would happen with any recommendation you make, that you could either, you know, recommend it as is or with some adjustments. Maybe, Ryan, if I'm, correct me if I'm wrong with any of that.
No, that's correct, that's what we were, we were kind of thinking about.
Okay, thank you. Regarding multifamily tax exemptions, I wanted, and I, I think I said it this before, Lisa, when you presented it to us before, that it appears to me that this is going to enable developers to really come in and get some good tax exemptions to come in. And I am of the opinion, or I should say, I should ask the question, does the city council feel that that enhancement will really help the city of Covington to go to that great extent of eight years and 12 years exemptions?
Well, I think the, the city put it in place in 2012, and then a few developments came in and, and used the multifamily tax exemption. And they also had some other issues. I think Bob kind of introduced the presentation by saying, the city experienced developments, whether they were market rate or affordable, and they weren't necessarily meeting the design quality the city was looking for. And so I think that happened with both affordable and market rate. And I think the city was looking at tools, the staff, and coming up with this work program for, for infill exemption and the form-based code. We started talking about the multifamily tax exemption. It's, it's meant to be an incentive to get the kind of development you're interested in, and of course, housing affordability has been an issue all across the region. And so I think the city's still interested in getting affordable housing, but I think there's a lot of literature that mixed income developments often work better for all the residents. And, and, and so we looked at some other example codes and, and that, that cities have put in place to see, are there ways in which we still can get affordable housing that achieve a better outcome for the residents? So supportive services are often required now under, if you get federal funding. And so the city thought, well, if, you know, we could get supportive services for those seeking the tax exemption that benefits the residents, we were seeing some of the, the developments that had come in were on the edges of, you know, being able to walk to services or be near other, you know, bus routes, or, you know, it was just, they, they were kind of on the edge. So these were meant to be targeted ways to kind of, you know, get a better outcome while still, I think the city's interest is still to have mixed-use development to make the town center more vibrant and bringing people living near retail office and jobs, you know, it, it is, it is a benefit overall to the city to have that.
Okay, I, I want to say thank you. You, you actually gave a pretty clear answer, similar to that, that the last meeting, but I wanted some of the other commissioners to be able to have the benefit of having that question asked and you providing that answer. So thank you for doing that.
Sure.
The last, I'm just gonna make one comment about parks. I think that parks in the area are going to be really kind of adds the dynamics of the city to have those parks available. And I think there's a number of questions that are still being asked about buying certain properties and making that fit in, maybe having a park-like setting in mineral, middle of town center. Those are the things that I think that we may want to have a further discussion about parks, but I don't know if we're gonna be able to answer them in the planning commission and/or in this particular initiative, unless you've got some inside information on that. And then the last thing I've got is, it looks to me like you're going to have a public hearing at the city council on August 10th as well, is that correct, Ryan?
Usually what happens for city council meetings, especially when it relates to comp plan updates and big projects, is that if there's anything that comes out of the, the planning commission and anything that's a major change, there's tendency to have another public hearing at city council. That may or may not happen, but the 10th is when we are supposed to be bringing it to the city council.
Okay, that answers all my questions, Jonathan, thank you.
Okay, that handles David. Jennifer is reserved for last, we're moving on to Murray, and then myself.
Yeah, well, most of my questions have already been asked, but I was curious to find out, Ryan, is there an estimated percentage of affordable versus market rate housing in Covington's downtown area right now in our multifamily areas? What's the?
I don't have those percentages off the top of my head, Murray, that's something I would have to take a look at and figure out just how that is. I know that we, we track that and we can possibly be able to find it. I know Daphne is on the line here, and she might have some information on that, but we can take a look at it, if that's something that you need for a decision factor on anything.
It would be interesting for me to know that, just for the next time we take a look at this multifamily tax credit. And I'm, I'm interested, I feel similarly to Dave, that those, those seem awfully long, the eight and 12-year, but if that's normal, if that's roughly what other cities do, then I guess that's, that's cool. I was just surprised that they were that long. But it would be interesting to know the mix, to get a better idea of how to think about those.
Well, I can give you, I can give you this, the Station by Vintage did not go after the multifamily tax exemption. They got their, they got a separate exemption through the state, so they didn't directly go through our multifamily tax exemption. They requested impact fee exemptions, and the city denied that. So the only one that is, I mean, they're 100, they're 100% affordable, Station by Vintage, and that is 189 units. Polaris is affordable, and I don't know how many units in there, I would assume 100%, but most of them, most of the units in the downtown are affordable.
Where is Vintage?
Vintage, Station by Vintage is on the corner of Wax Road and Covington Way Southeast.
Ah, okay.
I wanted to mention too, Ryan, and just in response, the eight and 12 years are what are set in the, the authorization for the law, so every community that offers it, that, those are the periods of time. And like Ryan was saying, not all developments will go after these tax exemptions. So we're not saying you can't have more than 30 or 40% affordable, like we're suggesting here. We're saying in order to qualify for the tax exemption, that, that that would be part of what you would desire as a mix, so.
Okay. And we, I, I assume.
Go ahead, Murray.
Okay, I was just gonna say, I assume that you can't stack those? You can't apply both for the city and the state and end up with 24 years or really deep cuts for 12 years, or can you?
Um, I would need to investigate some of the ones that were developed using the multifamily tax exemption to see if they also qualified for state. But you cannot, my understanding is, under, you know, it wouldn't mean that you get consecutive periods, if that, you know, I think for the city, it's just 12 years or, I'd, but I'd have to find out more, I'm not as familiar with some of those state exemptions.
Okay, the only last question I had was, what, you mentioned that Station by Vintage went after the state offer instead of the city offer. What's, what's the advantage of going with the state over the city? What is the state offer, if that's something that can be answered here?
I don't think that's something that can be answered here, Murray. That was done by the developer without any interaction with the city on that. So we really don't have any information on that. I just know what they decided to go after instead of the multifamily tax exemption through the city.
Okay, yeah, that was just a, more for curiosity's sake, so, all right, that's all I have.
I'm gonna move on to my questions and statements, and then we'll go to Jennifer. She, she's requested to go last, unless she wants to go now. So first, I'd like to say, really good presentation, as always, by staff and by our consultants. I'm, I'm pleased to see that the space limitation now applies to everyone in the town center area. I thought it was extremely, extremely risky to, the way it was previously worded, so that only churches were limited to one area and, in space. I'm glad to see that's been fixed. I do have a few concerns and questions. I'd like to start with something on the little bit on the hammer side, the map that's currently in front of us, I see that Lake Winterwood is no longer part of Covington. Has there been a secession?
Mr. Chairman, this map is showing downtown Covington. This is not showing the entire city limits of Covington, and Lake Winterwood is not located within the downtown zones.
Thank you. My next question's about these 12-year exemptions. I share Murray's concern that a developer might try and stack exemptions to not pay property taxes for a particularly long period of time, or to pay astronomically low property tax rates. But I'm also concerned about the complete absence of definition of supportive services and a, the complete absence of any kind of enforcement mechanism. And, you know, without trying to grandstand or anything, but the way this is written, this is a giant loophole. The developer says, I'm gonna offer daycare. What steps are being taken to make sure daycare is actually offered, and that remains available for that, for the duration of that exemption?
Do you want to answer that, Lisa, or you want me to?
Well, I, I guess I would say we gave examples of supportive services in the language, and I believe there's some other definitions that may be out there, because, like I mentioned, to get some federal funding, they often require supportive services, so we can look at those definitions.
And then what about making sure those services remain available while exemption is in place?
Yeah, I don't know, Ryan, if, for those other developments that, that got the tax exemption, I believe there's some kind of a.
There's a, there's a yearly reporting that they have to submit to the city, and I believe Anne was, Anne was receiving those for. And I believe Anne was, Anne was receiving those for a period of time and now I believe they're going to Daphne and myself, so. We'll have to take a look at that.
So correct me again if I'm interpreting this incorrectly. But what you're saying is that they could three months into it decide their daycare is cost too much. They get the exemption and the and the city doesn't know about it for a full nine months.
So I think, Ryan, it's annual monitoring to the city and then I think Department of Commerce is supposed to monitor and I wonder the city would license or have a business license for the daycare, right? Or or for sort of
Right, but that business license is generally granted for a year.
If somebody else were to go into that space, Ryan, they would have to get a new business license. Yeah.
I'm not sure that it's addressing my question, though. It sounds like there's no good answer here. I'm sorry. If the service shuts down, is the exemption gonna be lost?
I don't think that the tax exemption would necessarily be lost, but I think, Ryan, we can look into what the mechanisms are with the annual reporting. To see like if if there's some condition, I would imagine it's like any other condition of approval, this city applies to development.
So these developers are private enterprises. They're in business to make money. We're going to give them a property tax exemption. And then we're not going to make sure they're holding the terms of their agreement. This concerns me. Now, I would love to hear more about how we're gonna enforce that, how we're gonna make sure that that exemption is continues to be justified throughout the life of the exemption.
Well, we can bring back information, I think, Ryan, maybe on the developments and the kind of information they're giving the city. And then I think in the new state law, there's more information that the city can require about the financial analysis for the development and some other things that they need to submit. So we can take, we can take another look at.
Actually, Lisa, let me just jump in here real quick because if I do recall, there were certain changes made to the state law. We were just going in here and doing a strategic fix to a certain amount of items within this section. But I'm looking through the entirety of three point eight zero, Mr. Chairman, and there are a large variety of different things of requirements for annual certification and report. There is a cancellation of tax exemption. All that stuff is already located in here. The only thing that you're looking at is certain little aspects that are going into the code that already exists.
I I agree. I am only looking at the multifamily property tax exemption document when I ask this question.
Right, so. So this, your questions don't take into into consideration the entirety of chapter three point eight zero. You're just taking into consideration what was provided there. Because there are a whole slew of things. For instance, the annual certification and report, you're gonna provide a statement of occupancy and facility of the multifamily units during the previous twelve months. Certification, the property has not changed use. It continues to be in compliance with the contract with the city of this chapter. Description of any substantial improvements or changes to the property made after the city issued the final certificate of tax exemption. Total monthly rent for each family unit. Break down the number and type in specific multifamily units rented. If a grant, if granted a twelve-year tax exemption, information demonstrating the owner's compliance with the affordability requirements of this chapter included but not limited to the income of each renter household at the time of the initial occupancy or the income of each purchaser of owner of occupied units at the time of purchase. I could go on. There's a lot.
I I will go and check out that section and I just was concerned that all I saw here was the bit about.
Make sure that everybody got the same picture and we weren't just saying that was the entirety of that.
I I I am concerned that both this document and the form-based code is providing credit for meeting only the silver standard for energy efficiency. Honestly, I think we can do better. I'm not sure why why, you know, going gold instead of platinum gives them, you know, extra credit.
You're talking about green building designation?
Yes. I I am also concerned that we have a see, we're we're removing the restriction on the maximum residential density, but we're not. But I didn't see anything indicating that we had to measure the density and accommodate for parking accordingly. Again, I haven't gone through the entire two hundred-page document.
Ryan, we can bring back information on silver and and I were looking at that before. You can achieve sort of the basic lead with just the energy code. Silver is, you know, it is an effort and and a cost to do that level and it is an improvement over any market rate, you know, development. Any kind of development that would just normally be at the basic level. And I don't know, Bob or Scott, if you get into that in your world is for lead certification. It's my understanding, it is, it's not a small effort to get to silver and it's a huge effort to get up to gold or platinum is my understanding.
Okay, well, forgive me, but this town center is supposed to be, you know, make Covington a destination. It's supposed to be the shining jewel of what we can accomplish. Why are we setting our standards low? That feels wrong to me.
I think it's actually asking for more than than you would necessarily get right now. And we were trying to bounce it out, I think, with understanding the desire to attract mixed use development.
It's also the procedures and the steps that you have to go through the time and money to go through those steps. So I think it was this strategic thought there because no other developments have the certification requirement. Regarding could probably use some clarification on your comments about the density and parking. I mean, there are the the, I believe the parking ratios are based on unit count. So though they, it is proportional from that standpoint. Maybe I'm, I was trying to get my arms around.
That said, we were gonna remove the maximum residential density, any increase in that residential density would require corresponding increase in parking.
Yes, because they have to require, we require a certain number of spaces based on the number of units.
Okay, thank you.
Yes.
I appreciate that.
And just to clarify that, Mr. Chairman, we wanted to ensure that the parking was ample with the the town center or downtown areas and we didn't want to limit it just to walkability only vehicular access is important to Covington and the town center. And and our team did look at alternatives to to not reduce parking more than we needed to.
I appreciate that. I am still concerned if there is a note in the section on parking that says that parking spaces could be reduced below the minimum number, though.
It has to be done with a parking study. Is that correct, Bob?
It does.
Yes.
Yeah, well, just because you do a parking study doesn't necessarily mean you're gonna get the.
Uh, and my, my, let me say this. I've been to Europe. I love Europe. I like the kind of development that you have in a vision. I'm concerned that we're trying to force a European style, a culture that's not there yet. I'm not sure how else I can go about saying that. I I get it, right? We pedestrian-only can work. I've been to Europe. It does work. I don't know if America's ready for it.
Well, and again, that's where we specifically looked at these requirements to make sure that the bare minimums were good enough. And I'm trying to remember where we ended up with on a maximum setup. Maybe Scott could chime in, but you know, recognizes that, as Ryan said, you know, a lot of people are still gonna drive. And so we need to provide that flexibility. And the developers have a choice. You know, they recognize that most of the time their lenders are gonna require the parking. You know, so we set a minimum, but their lenders may even require more and they often do more than the minimum that we have. So the code just sets the bare minimum. Usually they're going to require more in many cases and and again, I don't know, Scott, if you have anything else to add. Scott reads into and knows the parking setup more than I do.
Yeah, I'll just say, I mean, we obviously didn't go with the dramatic direction of removing parking requirements, but you know, there are a number of cities that have done that, but you know, developers still build parking even though they're not legally required to. It's just, it's what the market demands. It's what their future tenants and business owners demand, so it's I don't think there's much of a risk there of inadequate parking supply.
Well, I can tell you that other jurisdictions within King County have actually been asked to reduce their parking supply to focus on transit, but those are more transit-oriented areas. But we don't have that, so we have to have kind of a balanced approach. And the way that we have this, I believe, is more of a balanced approach than providing too little and providing too many. So I think we're right on, right on the sweet spot with parking.
I appreciate you taking the time to answer my concerns. I will try and research section three point eight a little further myself, but I think it would be good for the commissioners as a whole to see the whole picture if you're talking about reducing, eliminate, exempting property taxes based on the presence of services. I'd also, you know, like to better understand what services qualify, how much of a, you know, percentage each one meets and but, you know, maybe some of that is dealt with in section three point eight, Ryan, but if there's additional information, I think it would be good for everybody to see it.
I would take a look at three point eight point one one zero. That's the cancellation of tax exemptions. So I mean, even if the owner fails to submit an annual report or annual declaration, the city has the authority to cancel. So there's all kinds of things in there. If the property owner no longer qualifies for a tax exemption, the tax exemption shall be canceled. And the King County assessor shall comply with applicable state law to impose additional taxes, interests and penalties on the property or property lien. Maybe place on the land pursuant to state law. So there's all kinds of fun stuff in there that I would encourage everyone to take a look at.
I think that's a great idea.
Ryan, just one other note on the supportive services. That's an extra requirement that that we were suggesting that that isn't in the state law. And so we put in examples that we're familiar with, but we're willing to bring back I, language on definitions beyond what we have.
I I think we just need to be absolutely clear there for the presence, you know, for for the sake sake of the residents of Covington and for the sake of, you know, the developer, exactly what is expected and what constitutes compliance and what does not. That pretty much covers my questions and concerns and comments. I think, Jennifer, you wanted to go next.
Well, as Bob was going through his part of the presentation, I felt like he had some good questions for us and I know that there were kind of some carryover from questions I'd had in the past too. So that was why I wanted to go back to those. And so, Bob, weren't you also trying to gather feedback from us on a few issues?
Well, these in particular are such late-breaking things and, you know, this may be one of your first it could be one of the first applications and a very significant one, so. And these aren't black and white. So wanted to, wanted to bring them up and have you think about it. So there's three things essentially. I'll go back to the first one. The first one was the street requirement. This one here, so we, and this came from the the downtown plan, this language expanding its street grid. And so that's sort of where this came from. And then when we started to see the initial site plan requirements, they didn't include even a pedestrian connection on this. And we're like, well, we, you know, the comp plan says this. The downtown plan says this, and this is what we're thinking here. They came back with a much improved, a much improved plan that had this pedestrian connection that was more like some of these, the through block connections that we mentioned here. It wasn't like a downtown passage, but it was more like these, the landscape passageways on the upper right here. In fact, wider than these. We can't show you the plan, but it was something to think about given the context around there because it's unique because you've got that subdivision. And there's that that street end exists there at the end of two seventy two seventy-seven street. But if, you know, for them to do a big development and they don't know yet what's to the right of them, but we've got this framework of of new streets. So I guess if you could see my cursor, their property line ends right here where this other north-south through buck connection is. And so one option is if 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 you wanted to get rid of this street type two connection that extends beyond their property over the, over the former school buildings. I would say that if this is pedestrian only, you certainly don't need this, so that you would make that just a through block connection. And that would allow pedestrian access through from the, from this subdivision here to all these uses. So if these people do that, nice connection to access there. Do they necessarily need auto access? To me, that's probably not as critical to have, to have that good pedestrian access.
I was wondering, Bob, I was wondering like what your real recommendation is because I was looking at and I can see how okay, having that east-west connector there for autos would probably be helpful, but is it really necessary?
From a urban designer standpoint, given your context here, I would probably say no because because you have two seventy-second here and also because the the subdivision is so insular. I mean, who's to say that that could change, but it's probably not gonna change for decades is my impression. So two seventy-second and the other connections here are are more critical. Obviously, making this connection from, from Polaris.
Right.
So one seventy-first, making that connection, that is absolutely critical. But this connection here from a vehicleer standpoint to me is less critical.
Did that become an orange dashed line and instead of a pink dash, right?
Well, that's why I would say to consider it, you know, if if the planning commissioners feel like they if you know the area, if you think it's it's needed and you're there more than I am, maybe feel differently, but I encourage you to at least consider this. And from a urban designer standpoint, based on what's around here, that I don't think it's as critical. The pedestrian access is is critical to me. And just have, making sure that those developments work together. So based on the improvements they've made from their earlier site plans, their new site plan definitely works better and is more integrated than the previous. And as a whole, that shows you the value of having good minimum standards.
On top of that, Bob, you know, sending traffic through that existing HO zone might not be this thing for some of the the neighboring property owners in that area. And having, having a way that those individuals can walk through here and enjoy the amenities within the town center and and still have the opportunity to access everything while still being in walking distance of their home is is probably kind of beneficial. If if somebody really needed to access the area that we are talking about for the potential new development, you can go down two seventy-sixth and cut across the Wax Road or up to one eighty-sixth and and just have those accesses there. So there's, there's all kinds of opportunities there. There's, there's, things are gonna change over the years and this is just one step forward in that direction.
So from a perspective of how do we get this done so that we make our August tenth deadline, which apparently is a hard So from a perspective of how do we get this done so that we make our August, August tenth deadline, which apparently is a hard deadline. Is do we need to do some decision here tonight?
You can decide kind of the direction you want to go and what we can do is. Take those directions and come back with that. Danger, if there's any changes that you want, we can bring that to the, the next public, at the public hearing on July fifteenth.
That's what I was thinking, yeah. Um, well, or I don't know, I guess it's up to the other commissioners, but I, I feel like. I mean, Bob is the professional and it sounds like Ryan's agreeing. I, I think that maybe that's a change we should consider, so. I, I think it would be easier for commissioners to weigh in on one issue at a time, but if you all want to. Go over all three and then talk about it, that's your choice.
I agree with your saying that one at a time is easier. Should we just take an informal poll here or? How do the commissioners feel?
Yes. Yeah, let's take an informal poll so that we know what everyone's thinking.
Okay, so regarding the street types map with the consideration to change the type two designation on two seventy seventh. To a through block connection, how do people feel? Or is anyone not okay with that?
I think it should be a walking. It should not be for cars. It should be walking.
Walking and biking or just walk?
Yeah, yeah, wa- walking.
Block connection.
Yeah.
What we're going to designate it.
And that would allow bikes, so.
Good.
So what we're then saying is that bicycles are not vehicles and don't have to follow laws when they're on the street. Or is that not a street anymore?
Not a street.
Well, maybe I misspeaking. Bob, what, what is it?
It could be, well, it could be a wooner, so it could have cars technically. But then that'd be a shared street. So there's three optional designs. One of them is a wooner, which is a shared street, but it's pedestrian oriented. And you know, it looks like one of those two on the left there. And, or it could be the landscape passageway, which is kind of like what their site plan shows. Which has landscaping on two sides of the, the hard surface trail. Or it could be this downtown passageway type of thing. So these are the, the main concepts and it could be any of those, but. Their concept shows the landscape passageway and that's the most common type of through block connection, the most predictable one. The, the.
Who's concept is that again, that shows the landscape passageway?
Well, that's the, what the, the type of thing that the site plan that's being proposed and Ryan can maybe expand on that. On that former school, the playground area, play field.
So as you know, we had a pre-application not that long ago about a fixed use development on that site. For a number of residential units and some mixed use amenities there. Before we would require the through block connection by a fleet instead of a. A path or a landscape passageway, downtown passway or woooner. What they have right now, it kind of meets the intent of what we are. And there are some things that we'll have to iron out with the applicant when we come down that process. But they're, they're looking at their alternatives right now and that, that came up today and it seemed like a very attractive and advantageous thing that the city may want to look at. And so that's why we got on the phone today and talked about it. And thought, you know, if we're going to bring it up, we might as well bring it up now and if we need to change, let's make the change now because. It actually worked quite well. When you look at it, there was a trail. I mean, I can't show you the site plan, obviously. But there was a trail coming from the north. It cuts down into the center as a water feature with a big circular area for like gathering. And then there was a trail that went to the west. And then there was also a trail that went to the east. And so there were, there were connections and I, I call them trails, but they're passageways. So there were multiple connections throughout that that people can go through. Now, the only thing is, is when you have mixed use. Projects like this that are predominantly residential, you have security issues that you're going to have to identify. And so there may be, there may be time limits or time constraints on when the developer thinks that. Those need to be open. For instance, if it's open past. Dusk, you know, they may have some concerns. They're going to close their gates and you know, not let individuals come through for, for their reasons. But at the same time, we have to look at the SEP TED requirements as part of this. And those are one of the things that we've already mentioned to them and their architecture. Architectural consultant has also chimed in in favor of what the city has said. So very, very good discussions today. And. If you, if you want an example of what it potentially could be. If you go out to Black Diamond, there's a multifamily development being built out in Black Diamond. But this is bigger and I think higher quality.
Well, in these passageways, I mean, at least to me, they look like they're appropriate for bikes, but are they not?
Well, they can be and, and actually this one would be because they're. I think there's a reference to fifteen feet wide, some of these paths. So that's, to me, it sounds like it's pretty bike friendly.
I just happen to have the actual design here in front of me. I just can't share it with anybody.
So let's go to the question back there and see if we're okay with a through block connection on this particular one. Is that okay with everyone?
Yes.
So.
So we answered the question, a consideration, do we change the type two designation on two seventy seven to a through block connection? The answer for me is yes.
Okay, Kathy, how do you feel?
Yes.
Joe, how do you feel? Joe Columbo, are you there?
Yeah, I, I'm in favor of it, being pedestrian. Bike only, I think it needs to be in the form of a, of a motion, not just consensus here.
I, I think the motion would come later when we approve the whole document or when we recommend the whole document, wouldn't it? But we can do a motion if that'll make you feel better.
Ryan, what do we need?
I'm trying to get back to my page. I don't really think it matters at this point. I mean, you could, you can just take a straw poll and figure out where you're at because. I mean, or you can make a motion to have, have our staff and consultants revise the. Street types map to eliminate the type two street on two seventy seven. And replace it with a through block connection. That would be your motion.
I make that motion. Thank you for wording it, Ryan.
Second thought.
It's nice to hear from you.
Anyone want to, want to speak to that motion?
I feel like we've spoken about it enough, but maybe others have comments or questions.
Uh, no, I'm, I'm fine.
Anyone else?
No, I'm good.
All right, by show of hands and a verbal acknowledgement, please raise your hand and say aye if you are in favor of that motion. Anyone opposed? Okay, that motion will pass. What is our next consideration, please?
Next one is the block frontage designation. The consideration, here we go, would be to change the landscape designation on two seventy. Sixth, uh, to mixed. So to change the green to purple on this map. At least in front of the subject property, but we had suggested probably just going all the way to. Changing all of the green here, all that goes all the way to one, the roundabout. Uh, is that one sixty fifth or one sixty eighth?
The car about.
One sixty fifth, act one sixty eight.
And I'm wondering why you're recommending that or asking us to.
It would allow, because the landscape designation, right, requires a landscape setback. On this property. And so let me see if I can show the landscape. So you could see, it would have to, like the sidewalks here. So they have to do a design like this. They couldn't do a storefront right on the sidewalk. They're interested in doing a storefront mixed use building. They wouldn't be allowed to do that on the landscape designation, the green. So that's why, based on that, we said, may, you might consider changing this green to purple. So it allows for it.
So this is a request from a developer.
Well, it's based on. They're not supposed, well, actually they sort of are requesting it, but it's just are based on seeing their proposal. Because they wouldn't be able to do it without this change.
Let me give you a point to clarify this a little bit. When this came in for a pre-app. It was under the existing code and the form base code wasn't even discussed. So what they are doing is they're trying to design their structure to meet the form base. They could come in and apply tomorrow. They've already had a pre-app, they can come in and apply tomorrow. So what they're trying to do is work with the city to try and get this development. As, as close to what we are requiring in the new form based code that will be adopted. But they were wondering if there was ways that we could make some alternatives on how we do this. Because they had planned all along to have commercial on the front. And that area where it's located in relation to, let's say, Polaris or affinity. You could potentially get a restaurant in there with the number of people with foot traffic in that area alone. It may be a small little convenience in there. So that could, that could be a very attractive amenity for. Individuals within that area that don't necessarily want to walk to Safeway or walk to Fred Meyer. They can just go to Little Corner Grocery there or maybe a, you know, wine tasting area or brewery or something like that. And there's all kinds of options there. I mean, we talked today about several different varieties. But I believe the biggest, the biggest issue was the landscape setback. So the street would.
I don't understand why that's an issue.
Well, because you have a.
It would take ten to fifteen feet of their property. It's, it takes part of their property. They have to set back the building. And when you look at their site plan, they're trying to get a certain number of units in and buildings and. And with this setback, it reduces their capacity. That's basically the bottom line.
We would basically just be changing this from green to purple.
Correct.
Just continuing the purple the whole way, right?
Yes.
Right.
So what you are also doing though is changing that zoning on the north side of the street. As well.
That's correct.
The south side.
Well, the north side.
Well.
Green is, is Valley Medical.
Yeah, that's probably not going to change in a while. You know, we, what we have done. We have done in other cities and other plans where the designation is, is different from one side of the street to another. So that is possible. We just kind of dry. We basically put green on the lower half or the whatever half and. We basically split the street. So that's, there's potential to do that if you feel that's necessary, but.
What about not extending it all the way to the end? So allowing the green. Past their property point to keep the roundabout from becoming a, you know, marketing. Commercial zone.
You could do that, although that's, that cul-de-sac there where it would apply to is part of the town centers. No, actually that's the MHO zone, but you could do commercial there. But you could, you could do that.
Isn't one sixty fifth purple? I mean, it's not showing on here, but I remember us talking about that before.
That's, that's basic. So there's no color on it. So that means it's basic. So it's more flexible. It's a different designation.
It's even more open than the purple, right?
Well, there's no, the big difference is there's no parking lot location standards. You could, you know, it doesn't say you have to have a building right on the street. You could put a parking lot there.
Before we go any further, so let's remember what the purple is. Purple is mixed. So mixed allows you to do either. Front or the other piece. So why don't give them with the market what they want to do in that area based on what's realistic? When you look at the other side, maybe if that piece behind Valley. Or on the other side of Polaris affinity there where the trees are wants to develop in the future, maybe they want to have that residential aspect off of there. Who knows? I don't know. But if.
Yeah, that's why we didn't show it red. Yeah.
And also we're going to change that thoroughfare or that through connection that we have shown in green there below that on two seventy.
So there's, yeah, there's three choices then. So you could either not do any change at all. You could change it to purple up to the street, if you could see my cursor.
That'd be one sixty eight.
Once you could change it up to one sixty eighth, or you could change it all the way to one sixty fifth. So there's three obvious options here is the easiest way to frame it.
Now, what would be the benefit to, I think it was Murray's idea where we. Have a little bit of green there. Between one sixty eighth and one sixty.
Murray was talking about going halfway.
And but I think Bob said we needed, that that didn't make sense. We needed to have it end at the road, right?
Well, you could do whatever you want to do, but our, our first instinct with this was just because you've only got this small. It only affects one property, so why not bring it all the way to the corner? And just allow some flexibility. That was our, internally, that was our initial thought. But if you feel strongly the other way.
I would, I, I.
I'd like to leave.
I, I drive by that spot and I see a future space for public art. If we, you know, designate that as mixed, then that public art, potential public art space could be lost. But that's my perspective on it.
Are you able to hear me at all? Oh, now it's working. There we go. I've been trying to talk and this thing just is not working well tonight at all. Yeah, I, I'd really like to see the purple go for their property. I, I, you know, I'm in support of that because they're, they're trying to do some good. And I don't want to short them on that, but I would like to keep the landscaping from one sixty fifth over to the. Traffic circle to try and not have a commercial zone go all the way to that street. It'd be nice to keep some landscaping.
I, I'm kind of in the same camp as Murray.
I agree with that also.
There are three other commissioners here. What do you, how do you feel?
Oh, go ahead, David.
I am also agreeing with that. I say aye.
Okay, so let's get a motion so we're consistent. I will move that we change the landscape designation on two hundred and seventy sixth over to. The intersection with either one hundred and sixty sixth avenue or one hundred and sixty eighth avenue. I'm not quite sure which that is from the map. To be mixed.
That was just a one sixty fifth, wasn't it? To save the last three blocks or so, wasn't that what?
No, one sixty fifth takes us all the way to the roundabout. And we said we didn't want to do that.
Yeah, that would stay as landscaped is what you're saying.
Yes.
That's what I heard.
Intersection between that intersection of, let's call it one sixty eighth and two hundred and seventy sixth. Uh, to the west of that would remain as landscaped.
I will second that.
Do I need to rephrase that for clarity, anyone?
Well, yeah, I guess I just want to clarify. So east of one sixty eighth is going to be purple to meet up with the purple, right?
Yes.
Yes.
Again, I've told you, I like the, the roundabout retaining more of that. Less developed feel. I, I look at that space, those spaces over there. It's already a little on the hideous side. I can't imagine. Commercial wealth will make it better. And there's a great spot there for potential public art use in conjunction with the clinic there. I, I would love to see that space. Uh, I, I would love to see that space preserved, and that's why I made the motion the way I did. I was. Would anyone like to speak to the second?
I, I believe that you're going to be covering the fact that you want to have that landscaping there. And you're also giving the opportunity for mixed to be able to be for the other area to the, I guess that's to the, the right. Going back. So to be.
May I ask a question?
Would anyone else like to speak to the motion? All right, I'll call for a vote. All in favor of the motion.
I think Ryan was maybe trying to ask a question or speak, right?
Yeah, this, this whole thing is, is kind of silly. So when you're looking at this, and I'm looking at the iMap right now, so when you get to two hundred and sixty-eighth. The, you go across the street of two sixty-eighth and you're heading towards that roundabout. There's a sliver of property in there between. Right there, that sliver of property, that's owned by the city. That's right away. So where are you going to put public art?
Well, right now nowhere. Just hoping that on the north, northeast side of it, we could do some kind of partnership with the clinic.
I think they have something there already. I think it might be related to stormwater.
It might be a, uh, swale. So, and if it's a bio swell, they could develop on it anyway. But I don't know for a fact that it's a bio swell, do I?
So what this is, this is a, a frontage or a designation for the buildings. And how the buildings are set back. This has nothing to do with it being landscaped out front. I mean, it does, but it doesn't at the same time. So you're not really benefiting off anything there because it's already landscaped. You have a sidewalk, you have street trees, it's good to go. I don't think you're going to get a residential development on the corner there, right by that roundabout anytime in the near future. And not have it listed as just mixed and call it good, just and end it right at two sixty-eighth. I think that's the idea that you should be looking at.
So I assume one sixty-eighth.
One sixty-eighth, excuse me.
Sixty-eight.
So just end the purple at one sixty-eighth and call it good.
Eliminate the green from one sixty-eighth to the roundabout.
Okay, uh, Bob, I think you were going to say something.
Oh, I was just, um, I, I'm unable to look at the code document, but if Scott's still on the line and has code out. What I wanted to check was for the basic block frontage, do we allow, I think we allow a storefront. As an option there, right? If you could look at the, at the basic.
Pull it up, uh, one.
So. Any storefront there would have inadequate face, space for parking, or it would be butted right up to the sidewalk?
Well, they'd have to meet parking some other way on site. Um, they might not have it on street, but they'd have to meet parking off-street then. If, um.
There, there's very limited space there.
No, they'd have to have it on their, on their property. Somewhere.
Could they buy the, uh, the lot to the south of the city-owned easement and use that? Or would that not work because it's not contiguous?
Well, to, to redevelop those sites, you're probably going to have to cobble together some, some sites. Um, Scott, did you find, uh, any, anything there was?
Under basic block frontage standards, um, buildings may be placed up to the sidewalk edge, provided they meet storefront block frontage standards.
That's right. So, um, they. So, so the problem is, is if you, if you make it purple and you leave a tiny bit of green. That half block, that means that one parcel you'd require setback, but. All the other ones, you wouldn't have one. So probably the best approach is. As Ryan mentioned, is to do the purple up to one sixty-eighth. Or to the, or to the roundabout. Um, but take out the green entirely. So either make it purple all the way to one sixty-fifth. Or you stop the purple at one sixty-eighth and just have it blank in basic beyond that.
Okay, I appreciate.
Does that make sense?
I, I appreciate what you said. I appreciate what Ryan said. Uh, we've decided that we're going to make these consideration recommendations with a motion. There's a motion on the floor. So let's do a vote, and if the motion fails, then we get another, we need another motion. Does that sound unacceptable, everyone?
What is the motions on the floor now?
That is correct. So all in favor of the existing motion. And I will restate it briefly, which is to extend the multi, the mixed designation up to the intersection with one hundred and sixty-eighth. Please say aye and raise your hand. Aye.
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 But that was revised motion, just so you know from what you mean.
Yeah, I'm confused.
No, I, no, there was no change to the motion. There were, there was testimony after the motion was seconded and before we voted.
I think.
Okay.
The wording is confusing. We should have just said, um, two seventy-six east, east of one sixty-eighth.
Okay.
We're getting our direction screwed up here and it's, you can't tell what we're talking about, I think.
So would you like to rephrase the motion and revote?
Yes, please.
So. Out after east of the intersection with one hundred and sixty-eighth avenue shall be designated as mixed. Is that more acceptable to you?
But then I guess I just want to clarify. So Jonathan, then you're going to leave the part from. One sixty-fifth to one sixty-eight at that little end green, right?
I am still in favor of that. I understand Ryan's position. I understand Bob's position. I don't agree with them, but I understand them. So, and if you agree with them.
Yeah, that's fine. I just wanted to clarify because I'm trying to make sure that I understand the motion on the table. And, and so go ahead, call for the vote again if necessary, or I didn't vote before because I was confused. So I can, if needed.
The motion is from east of the intersection of. One hundred and sixtieth Avenue, two hundred and seventy-sixth Street will be changed, have its designation changed to mixed. If you are in favor of that, please raise your hand and say aye.
Aye.
Jennifer, I believe you're the only one who hasn't voted, uh.
I'm naying because I feel like we should, instead of having that. And sorry, it's just easier to go color codes. Instead of keeping that little bit green, I think it needs to be, there be purple or nothing. So that's why I'm saying no. I agree with purple for the majority.
I think that can be our next motion, if that's what you want. We can deal with that little tail end.
Uh, yeah, we can do it that way if you want, um.
That wasn't what the motion was, so that's why I had.
That would mean another motion.
Yeah, but that's why I wanted to clarify is I am fine with purple. You know, the majority of the way, I'm just not. I just don't think it makes sense to have green in that little section is all.
Okay, well, does anyone want to? Do another motion to fix the rest of it? I will vote against it, but, but you can overhaul me. I'm good with that.
Or we could stick, or we could stick with what we have. Of purple to one sixty-eighth. And we can deal with that little tail later after we have more information.
That sounds good.
I would recommend that you move forward with some kind of a vote tonight on what you want to do with this. Let's just get it over with. Because we're, we're wasting a lot of time arguing about a, a simple little item that really is not going to touch anything.
Okay, does anyone wish to make another motion regarding this consideration?
I just want to stick, I'm not.
Now we're, and now we're just talking about the, the tail, right?
Yeah, you all seem fine with it. And so that, that's, that's fine, you know?
Okay. I, I'm not hearing another motion on this particular consideration, so let's move on to our next consideration.
Mr. Chairman, may I ask a point of clarification?
Yes, please.
Because the minutes are getting muddled here with all this stuff going on. I want to know what exactly you voted on. Are you making the street purple from two sixty-eighth to the east to two seventy-second? And then just leaving that little tail as green? Or are you making the whole thing purple? What are you doing?
I'm putting it in the chat right now.
Cause I don't think that was the original motion that was on the table.
We did rephrase the motion and we did revote.
Uh, you did not withdraw the motion.
I, I put into the chat what we voted on. Does anyone feel that's not what you voted for?
I guess just to clarify, I feel like a third time now. Jonathan, your plan is to keep a little bit of green on the very left, right? That's what you all agreed to, right?
Yes.
Yes, okay. And that's where I'm fine. I would prefer that it be left blank or purple. But if you all want it green, that's, that's fine because I am getting the purple, which is what I wanted. But I just felt I needed to vote against it because I didn't agree with that little bit of green. That was all.
I don't think we agreed anything about the tail end. We agreed to go do what's east of there. The tail end was not in question at that point in the motion.
Does anyone see the need for a second for an additional motion here to deal with that portion? That's west of the intersection. If you do, please make a motion.
Ri- Ryan, do you have a, a suggestion about how that should be designated? We should deal with it at all or what?
I've already said that you should either make it purple or make it undesignedated.
As it stands.
Oh, sorry, David.
The thing is, is that when we did the original voting, or as you say, the original motion, we should have rescinded that and said. We've withdrawn our motion. And now that we've gone with this new motion, which says it's going east of the intersection will be mixed. That means it will be blank on the other side of that.
No. That doesn't.
No.
It means it's going to be green like Jonathan.
Yeah.
Okay.
We have not had a motion on the portion that is currently green. Other than east of one sixty-six or one sixty-eight, whatever that is.
I move we reconsider that previous motion.
I second that.
Awesome. Please speak to your motion.
I move that we change the landscape designation on two seventy-six to mixed, period.
In its entirety.
Yes.
Do we have a second?
I second that.
Joe, would you like to speak to your motion?
I'm, uh, following Ryan's suggestion that that's a. Tail, a tail wagging the dog there and it doesn't, doesn't amount to anything. And if he thinks it should be purple, then. For the point of clarification, we're trying to simplify things and clarify things, then I think that's the easiest way to clarify it.
Jennifer, would you like to speak to your motion or your second?
Now I just agree with Joe. He said it very well.
Does anyone else wish to speak for or against the motion? By show of hands and saying aye, please indicate if you're in favor of the motion.
Aye.
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 I, I vote nay. We have one outstanding vote.
I also vote nay.
Yeah, two nay.
I vote nay.
I got you, Murray. The motion passes four to two. You've got your mixed designation. What's our next consideration, please, before this takes control of the meeting again?
Yeah, I think there's a third one.
The third one regards the retail space depth. Um, as I mentioned, there's a thirty-foot minimum requirement there. Um, on the latest site plan concept. Uh, they're looking at twenty-five foot deep retail space that would meet the, both that minimum or the departure language. So there's, there's three options here. At least, I guess there could be more, but there's three basic one. One is say, no, I like the current. Language you have at thirty feet plus the current departure language. The other one is to decrease the minimum retail space depth from thirty to twenty-five. To allow more flexibility. Or the third option is to. Uh, change the departure criteria under four A. Uh, by deleting the, uh, text above the red underline. The, the twenty-five percent reference to basically delete that language. And that would just say that, um. That you could propose a departure in the language criteria would be reduced depths will be considered. Where the applicant can successfully demonstrate that the. Proposed alternative design and configuration of the space is viable for a variety of permitted retail uses. Is that clear?
So which option do you recommend?
Well, I will mention that, uh, uh, I think in talking with, uh, Scott and Ryan here. We are kind of ending up on the number three option because that still keeps the. Retail space minimum at thirty. But allow some flexibility and allows the director to. I- if they think they meet the intent. To maybe allow for this.
Well, I'm confused. Earlier, when we were talking about parking, you told me that builder and the lender would probably choose more parking than the minimum. Simply to make the properties marketable. Net, and you're willing to trust the builders and the lenders to build above the minimum because of that. But net, you're not willing to trust them to build a commercially viable rental space? I'm confused.
Uh, well, here we, we've seen, we've seen variations when, uh, in this situation where. I think it's Spokane that a requirement where the space only need to be twenty feet deep. But, um, you know, builders are sometimes do that just to get their residential numbers in and their parking and to make the site plan work. So oftentimes it's important to have some minimum standards for retail space depth because they'll do funny things sometimes. And not rely on the retail because they could money, make money off of the other portions of the project. So, um, this, the intent of having a code like this is trying to at least have some minimum. For the depth of the retail space. So you're creating. Uh, you know, long-term viable space. That's the reasoning by having a standard such as this. So, but otherwise this parking and all that is, are, are other regulations. So that's. Otherwise, that's a, that's a different issue than this.
I, I, I disagree, but I don't have the experience you have and I, I will trust your experience. Um, but does anyone feel strongly about one of the options?
No. I, I.
So.
Option three, I feel like it'd be better to keep our standards, but allow some flexibility again for this. Application, right?
Okay.
I don't know the proper wording, but I make a motion that we, um, adjust this section. For option three. Sorry, whoever.
Remove section four A. That would be to remove section four A from this text in eighteen thirty-one, three twenty.
Well, I'll, I'll speak up. It would be, I think what she's trying to say is to adjust the text in four A. Uh, to delete. The words on up to twenty-five percent of applicable block frontage. To, to delete those words that are, uh, underlined and read in, in on this slide.
Yes, what Bob said.
I will second that motion.
Um, I don't have anything else to say about my motion, but maybe other commissioners have questions or comments.
I also have nothing else to add. Does you, anyone else? All in favor, say aye and raise your hand visibly, please.
Aye.
Aye.
Alright.
Aye.
And that was four. Did I hear, did I, did I miss five and six?
You got David. As a yes.
Okay, any nays?
I didn't hear Joe.
Yeah, I said yes.
Okay.
Is that a six to zero vote, correct? Great. Do you have the guidance you need, Bob?
Yes, thank you.
Awesome.
Mr. Chairman, we'll point a clarification if we could go back to the landscape. discussion that we just had regarding purple and green.
Oh, God.
South, there is a street designated as a street right now that should be designated as a through block connection that is landscaped. I would recommend that we remove that a through block connection.
I will make that motion with the proviso that vehicles not be allowed on that either.
When you say vehicles, you mean bikes?
I mean motor, motorized vehicles.
Okay.
Motorcycles, electric bikes, cars, trucks.
Scooters.
Scooters.
Okay, so Ryan, again, I guess I'm going by colors. You're suggesting that I can't read the street name, but the broken up green.
Is that 277th there?
Yes.
Oh, yeah, 277th. It be changed from blocked green to blocked orange, right?
Correct.
Yeah, if I may interject. The this, the change on the street map that we made a few minutes ago, that would be directly tied to this. So I'm not sure you need to make a motion here. We will automatically.
Correct.
Add to a black branded shock neck.
Different map, right?
I thought.
Well, it's a different.
Seventh, not 276.
Yeah.
I think that's what Ryan was referring to though. But by by making that change to a through block connection on the other map, it it automatically changes this map too.
Okay, that was my point of clarifying.
It's solved.
Clarifying question.
Solved. Thanks. Good, good catch, but it is solved.
Okay.
So.
I thought it was deja vu.
Yeah.
All right, folks, it's, we've been here for two and a half hours. Let's try and wrap this up, okay? Not that I don't enjoy all of your company. But if we're going to have, continue to have two and a half to three hour meetings, I would say we need to have a standard for a restroom break in the middle. So anything else on the form-based code amendments, the proposed infill exemption code, the proposed multifamily property tax exemption code? We're not taking any action tonight other than doing the considerations. Does any commissioner have anything else to put to put to put out there? Great. Moving on to new business, I see no new business items listed. Moving on to all business, it is listed as specifically as none. We have an attendance vote. Do we have any attendance from? See who's missing.
We heard.
From Darren.
Missionary growth requested to be excused last meeting and also sent an email follow up.
I make a motion that we excuse his absence.
Second thought.
All in favor, say aye and please raise your hand.
Aye.
Frank, that was unanimous. Public comment period, the same rules apply as in saying the first sentence and comments period. Dr. Johnson, please go ahead and if you need me to refresh you on those rules, go ahead. Let me know. Otherwise, go ahead for yours.
Hey, thank you very much, guys. Appreciate this. I just have a follow up question based on that Scott mentioned in his, based on allowance of veterinary clinics. Scott mentioned in his presentation that veterinary clinics are proposed to be allowed in the amendments here. And my question would be that moving forward, is it correct to say that veterinary clinics will be allowed if there is no opposition at the upcoming public hearings? And if so, then moving forward, do I need to do anything to further are, other than the letter that is going to be coming to the, is there anything further I need to do on my own behalf as we move forward?
I actually would like to respond to that if that's okay, Ron. So my understanding is that after our public hearing, we will wait, make a recommendation to the city council about the form-based code. And that will go to the city council at or before the August 10th meeting. They not also have a public hearing and they will enact that.
Okay, so there's one or more public hearings may still happen. And if there's no opposition there and the council sees fit, then they will, then it's they're the final say to pass.
Even if there's opposition, they may not decide that the opposition is correct. That is up to the city council at their public hearing. Ryan, did I miss anything?
No, and we haven't had anybody in opposition to having veterinary clinics in the areas that were designated within the form-based code. This was kind of a, a, we received an application.
Anything else, Dr. Johnson?
Okay. Thank you very much. Appreciate your time and efforts tonight and giving me the opportunity to speak.
I do have one further question from Ryan related to Dr. Johnson's comment, which is, is Fred Meyer included in the town center zone? I don't believe it is. I think that's general commercial.
Let me open the zoning map.
So if that is the case, and Ryan will confirm that the the form-based code would not have any impact on that, there would have to be an additional code change required, I believe.
Good catch.
I'm seeing it's in the mixed commercial zone and the proposed code allows for it in the mixed use zone.
Okay, perfect.
Yes.
Thank you. I just wanted to make sure we were giving Dr. Johnson correction. Okay, anyone else for public comment? I only see one attendee out there, but if there's people on the phone. Not hearing any other requests for public comment. And Ryan, I don't think you see any other requests or hear any other requests. So let's move on to comments and conditions of staff and commissioners. So I think Ryan and we have Daphne, we haven't heard from Daphne all night. Daphne.
Hi, good evening, planning commission. I do have any major comments. The only thing I would like to say is I haven't brought it up to the commission, but just want to let you guys know that I am expecting and a baby in September. So I will be taking some time off then. So just want to let you guys know that. But besides that, enjoy the back and forth conversation. It will be very interesting. So thank you.
Thank you and congratulations.
Thank you.
So I see the pain look on Ryan's face because he told me earlier that all is, everybody is quit within the past two weeks.
Yes, and I won't quit and leaving him. I will still continue working for the city.
Ryan, anything to say?
I do. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I have missed you thoroughly for the last two months and I'm glad you're able to come back tonight and participate in this lively conversation. And I do appreciate your questions on the form-based code. So thank you so much for, for providing me the opportunity to comment on some of these areas that need to be clarified. Thank you to our consultants for their great work they've done on this. We've kind of had to scramble a little bit to get this thing moving forward. As you know, with some of the departures, we've had, we've had quite an interesting few weeks. So we had to do some major scrambling and thank you, Bob, Scott and Lisa. Your class act in my book and looking forward to the public hearing and a recommendation from the planning commission to city council to move this forward and then ultimately getting this adopted before our deadline runs out. So thank you so much for this wonderful evening and I'm out of here.
Okay, let's go on to the commissioners. Let's start with Kathy, top left on my screen.
Quick question. Are we having a meeting on July the first?
Let me take a look. I.
I have not received the cancellation. That's a good question.
No, you haven't. And I scheduled a meeting in Zoom just in case we wanted it. The only thing that we have on that would be the residential recreation standards that we could bring back at that meeting. But I'll leave it up to the commission to decide if they really would like to meet right before the Fourth of July or if you would like some time off since we've been pretty much at this solid for quite a while now.
Okay. I'll get to that when it's my turn. Let's see, anything else, Kathy?
Yeah, one more. The meeting on the 15th, are we going to be in city council chambers for that?
It's like I can cross the questions off.
That's a great question and I will find out for you on Monday and I will let you.
Okay.
I think.
Thank you.
Will be. But in some capacity, maybe not.
Okay.
This cannot be allowed to happen. My chair cannot be allowed to move that close to the center.
Okay, I'm done. Everybody have a good weekend.
We have to give it.
David.
Long meeting. And I want to say thank you to Bob and Scott and Lisa for their efforts. I, the only thing that could have been better is if we had the right documents to start with this week. Maybe we could have had a, you know, a little maybe quicker, but I don't know. We still, I would have a lot of effort there. I want to let you know the status of 204th. If you haven't seen it, it's a disaster. I still can't, it takes like 10 to 15 minutes for me to get out of that place, my home, to get to the main dragger. But it's coming along and they're doing a lot of effort and it looks really good. If you wanted to get in touch with what's going on, you can go onto the website for the Covington City and go to the 204th Covington Connector. And they've got links to the YouTube videos where you can see the drone pictures of what's going on. I recommend you take a look at it and you can really see how it's coming to being. I just, that's really all I've got to say. Thank you for everybody's participation. I think it was great. Thank you. Have a great weekend.
Okay, let's see, Jennifer.
I'll echo what some others have said. It was a great presentation. Great conversations tonight. Guess the only other things would be congratulations, Daphne, and happy Father's Day to all the fathers of children or fur babies.
Let's see, Joe.
Technical issue, I, I think if the meeting was being recorded in Bob's first slide, so this was a public hearing. And am I correct in saying this was not a public hearing technically?
We did not have a public hearing tonight.
So maybe that should be taken off that slide. In other words, the record is going to show we did have a public hearing if anybody looked at that.
I think the minutes will show that, wouldn't they, Ryan?
Yes, I will update the minutes to show that you guys excluded the public hearing.
Also, I think we got a little traction when we were talking about tax exemptions for multifamily. If I heard the explanation that tax exemption goes to the homeowner. I'm confused about the homeowner's tax exemption and how if the developer defaulted on daycare or something, how would that affect the homeowner? I thought that was two different issues we're dealing with there. We probably needed to clarify that a bit and a little bit concerned about the they we kept talking about tonight. We weren't quite sure who they were. It seems like now we're trying to pin the tail on the donkey and the donkey is moving. And we've got other people in the conversation who are apparently the developers who are maybe a problem is we're in between codes here and that's causing some confusion. But I, I feel like we have other people making input here that I wasn't counting on in terms of, well, this is what the developer says and this is what they want on their street and so on. I'm just concerned about where, is there a line we draw there or how do we manage that input in our work at the same time? That's all.
Murray, you're up.
I'm going to keep mine very short. Welcome back, Jonathan. It's nice to have you back. Thank you to the consultants for all the great work and we'll look forward to more in the future. Thank you for your patience, Ryan, and everybody have a good weekend. That's it.
Okay, I'll be as brief as possible. Same, the same thank you to the staff, to the experts who gave a testimony and even to the attendees who showed up. And apparently one of them gutted it out and if you were a resident of Covington, you would be like, hey, you should consider applying for a commission spot. So a quick comment about to Joe, I thought the multifamily housing in the town center was going to basically be apartments, not condos. That's why I was concerned about the continuation of the exemptions. If I was, if, if I was wrong, I apologize. And I know you all missed me and I missed all of you too, but you did have the very handsome Murray as your chair for the time being and it was great. I am back. I'm just finishing up my capstone for my training now. And so I look forward to seeing you all again. And then I think there was a decision to be made about whether or not we want to have a meeting on the first. The, before we take a vote, I would say, is there too much material on the 15th for us to adequately cover for in one large sitting? And if so, I would think we would go ahead with the meeting on the first to pre-cover some of that material. So I would ask Ryan and in Bob and Scott and Lisa, if there is, if there's, how much material there is. And I would remind you that the form-based code is 200 pages. So with that in mind, show of hands, who thinks we need a meeting on the first?
Aren't we going to hear from Ryan and then to, to hear how much there was?
Oh, you're right. I apologize.
To make a comment. A lot of the material that we're discussing, we have reviewed at four or five other meetings. So I don't feel that the number of pages is really that much to review because we've done it before.
Okay.
Yeah, good point, David.
Not much is, not much has changed from what we've already talked about and covered this evening. Bob and Scott and Lisa provided a great overview of the things that were updated since the first round of code and the stuff that you've had reviewed already. So a lot of the stuff you've already reviewed. So I don't know how much more you need to review to go and make a decision on something or, excuse me, a recommendation.
Okay, what about, what about the discussion of the exemptions and the conditions for enforcing them and things like that? Does that merit a full meeting?
Exemptions for what?
The tax exemptions for the infill exemption code? Sorry, the property tax exemption, 3.80. We want to have further discussion there and how long will that take?
I don't think that needs a full meeting. I think that we could have that taken care of probably at the next meeting. Would you con, would you concur, Lisa, for the 15th?
I, yes, I think we can just bring back some clarification on the definition of the supportive services and and I think, Ryan, you did point out all the areas of the code that, that are part of the process for ongoing review. So we can, I don't think it'll take very long.
Okay, so with that in mind, who feels that we need a meeting on the first? Please raise your hand. Anybody think we don't need a meeting on the first? Raise your hand.
Don't need a first.
Do not. Yes, that is apparently unanimous. Did Murray, did you raise your hand?
I did, yeah.
All right, great. So that is unanimous, no meeting on the first.
I will set out a cancellation on Monday.
Great. So two more things really fast. I did miss you all terribly while I was in training, but I did not miss you all while I was rafting on the Snake River. If anybody is interested in seeing photos and videos, you can send me an email privately and I will send you a link to my private Dropbox. I will say there are otters, golden eagles, bald eagles, bullocks Orioles, Western Canagers, Lazuli Buntings, bears, elk. If you're interested in seeing that stuff, send me an email privately. And finally, this Saturday, 10 AM to 5 at Safeway in Covington. Covington Rotary is doing a baby drive at Safeway. And that is for diapers, wipes and donations to help get people off of disposable diapers and into compostable or reusable diapers. So if you can come out and support Covington Storehouse, you're certainly welcome. I have nothing else. It's been a pleasure seeing you all again. Anyone, anything else? Great meeting is adjourned. Thank you, everybody. Have a wonderful night, wonderful day tomorrow and a wonderful weekend.
You as well.
Everybody, we'll see you on the 15th.